Good evening, everyone. It being seven o'clock in the quorum present, I'm going to call this August thirteenth Planning Board meeting to order. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, an act in extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law on March 28th, 2025, this meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person participation. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so either in person or via the Zoom meeting application. Credentials to be found on the town's website. First on our agenda this evening are administrative notes, beginning with the minutes of July 23rd, 2025. Do I have any questions, comments, corrections from members of the board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? As all members, I believe, are present in person, we can raise, do it by a vote of show of hands, all in favor. Unanimous. We have no covenants plans or releases or Form A plans, so I'll move on to announcements. The open space committee will be meeting tomorrow, August 14th, at 6:00 PM. The meeting is virtual only, but of course, open to the public. Anyone who wishes to attend can find the credentials on the town's website. The master plan committee will hold its next meeting on August 28th at 6:00 PM. People may attend in person here at Town Hall or via Zoom. On the agenda is a presentation by the consultants on financial and economic analysis and ideas for the format of the master plan document itself. Next on the agenda this evening, we have committee appointments for the Plymouth Center Steering Committee. Yara Montmigny. Yara, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us via Zoom tonight. So, just very briefly, can you tell us why you want to remain on the Plymouth Center Steering Committee?
Because I'm trying to help where I can, and I've been enjoying the year that I've had so far.
Okay, that's great. Let me bring it back to the board. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Bennett?
No questions.
Mr. Mann.
Good evening. Could you just tell me what you would hope to, anything specific that you'd hope to accomplish as a member, or any issues that are outstanding to you that you'd like to see addressed by that committee?
The primary issue that, from my perspective, that is still outstanding and has yet to be completed or fulfilled is the actions associated with the downtown traffic study and the primarily red ticket or the top 12 items that are concentrated in downtown, in the Plymouth Center.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Mr. Grandy?
I have no questions, just a comment. Thank you for volunteering. It's always great to have people volunteer, be on the steering committees, and very important to the planning board to get your opinions and everything that's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And the second reason I, what I hope to continue to achieve is just continuing to listen to the neighbors and bring back information from the town. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no questions, so at this point, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve or recommend?
I have a motion to approve, and it's a two-year term, as I understand. Is that correct? Yes, it's a two-year term. So I have a motion to approve for a two-year term. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Make sure you get sworn in again for your remaining term.
Fantastic. And when does that, that doesn't happen tonight, does it?
No, you have to come into Town Hall, and they'll swear you in, then, very promptly.
Fantastic. I'm going to exit the meeting because we actually have a Plymouth Center Steering Committee concurrent with this one. So I'm going to exit and join that one. Thank you all.
One of the things you may want to bring back to the center, the Plymouth Center Steering Committee, is they should probably try not to schedule their meetings opposite planning board meetings, as it makes it challenging for any one of us who do want to attend those meetings to be able to attend. So, you might want to bring that comment back to them.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, bye-bye.
Next on our agenda, we have B 509, 10 Citation Drive, Zachary Nygro. Discussion of request for waiver of side setback on map 62, sorry, 63, lot 17-26. Good evening.
Gentlemen, I'm back before the board. The last time that I was here, you guys were gracious enough to grant me approval for my waiver regarding the setback. The reason why I'm back here again is to discuss the contingency that you gentlemen placed on that approval, because I unfortunately have come to a head with all of my efforts in trying to resolve the issue, and I'm more or less at a standstill at this point. So I figured I'd come back before the board and see if we can hopefully come to a reasonable solution here, where you gentlemen can hopefully use your authority to allow me to continue with my project and stand with your approval decision from the last hearing.
Okay, and for the record, so the last time you were here, we had granted you, as I recall, the issue was the foundation that had been constructed too close to a lot line. Mr. Hartman, do you recall the distance versus the setback requirement?
So, the requirement is 10 feet and it's 7.2 feet. And what was the, there was a number, I think that's to the existing, so I think there's an overhang. So, if I recall, the request was to go to, do you recall?
It was like 5.9, I believe, 5.9 feet.
Because of the overhang, too.
And the, and that was already constructed, so you were asking for retroactive relief?
Correct.
And your position, so you've made efforts with the neighbor to obtain their consent, and they have declined?
I wouldn't say that they've declined. I would say that they came back with a alternative terms of negotiation, which is a little bit different than what I had understood prior to coming to my original hearing. Otherwise, I wouldn't have wasted my time to come to the original hearing. And it's, I don't know, my speculation that because of the contingency that you gentlemen put on that approval, that now my neighbor, I guess, feels that they have me over a barrel, and therefore, should they decide to give me that signature or approval, quote unquote, or at least no opposition, then they will, I don't know, get the plan that I presented to you guys just very recently, which you could take a look at.
So can you explain the plan that you submitted?
Might be somebody in the audience who wants to speak to, so.
Okay, well, I'll ask for an explanation of the plan, and then...
Sure.
So...
Well, the initial offer, I guess I would say, is, I guess I should start all the way back to having my attorney draft a formal letter to just have Mr. Webby, my neighbor, agree to not opposing your gentleman's approval, which he didn't oppose until, I guess, he learned of this contingency that you gentlemen had placed on that approval. So, more or less overnight, his tune changed, to which he said, he wants to have a formal letter presented to him by my attorney. I wasted a couple dollars in a couple of weeks. I got that letter to him, to which he didn't even address. And then his solution, I guess, was to ask my attorney to ask me if I'd be interested in purchasing the lot next door in order to achieve the setback required, to which obviously is foolish, because as we discussed in our last hearing together, the lot is unbuildable. And as you could see by the plan that's before you, which was Mr. Webby's proposal, clearly, he believes that the lot is unbuildable. That's why he's, I guess, proposing that he take 19,000 square feet of my lot in trade for only 2,000 square feet of his lot, which to any common person would be a ridiculous request, I would think.
Okay, so, and that's the, that was the clarification we're looking at, so...
Correct. You can see there in the, in the part that shaded in the back half of my lot, that 19,000 square foot figure, you know, Lot B or whatever they call it.
Right, Parcel B. So, the proposal was to swap Parcel B for Parcel A, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Which in my opinion, I mean, you gentlemen make your, form your own opinions, but that would be a wild trade, in my personal opinion.
Understood. Mr. Hartman, is there someone else who wishes to be heard on this? Okay, let me, yes, okay. We do have, so why don't we hear from somebody first, and then...
Sure.
You've got, you've got to stand up in front of the microphone, sorry.
Yeah. My name is Dick DiBenedictus. I'm the original engineer for Fox Hill, which was the Trails. I'm here to represent Mr. Webby and Mr. Cole and present their objection to why they don't want to go along with this seven-foot setback. But I don't want to interrupt this, or so, when we finish, finish his presentation, and then I'll...
We've heard, we've heard his presentation from the prior meeting, so we understand that. We can always go back to asking him some more questions afterwards, so why don't we hear what Mr. Webby, Mr. Cole's position is?
Is this the proper place?
No, I would move it closer for them to actually see it. I'd move it closer for them to see it.
There is no chance that we are going to see that from back here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right in front.
Yeah, right in my lap. Right, tight to the front spot.
Right, right, right up to the frontier, yes.
He has the weakest eyes, let him see.
Do you really want me to pull out an eye chart, Frank?
2020, baby.
No. No, we didn't hear anything, and that's correct.
Yeah, we should have.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I did this last minute because these drawings that were originally done and submitted as they're supposed to come small, so I just did this to pass this out for you, just so you can see.
Are they all the same?
Yeah, they're all the same, yeah. So anyway, so, so you know the whole story behind Fox Hill, and originally, which was called the Trails, which I did a number of years ago with Mr. Hartman. Basically, it was a combination of two major bylaws that we, it was the first time they were initiated, the bylaw having to do with the transfer of development rights and the world density development, where you will, the town gave certain proper, appropriate relief in order to build smaller lots on a larger lot, higher density area. And we managed to do, I believe it was 52 lots with 108 open space areas. And we had basically taken, I think it was 13 lots from a local farm and brought that on. So it was the first time that was done, as Mr. Hartman would tell you. But anyway, so, so this resulted in this development, which allowed for a lot of, you know, reduced, reduced frontages, reduced side lots, but the 10-foot was, was the absolute minimum. And it is, I believe it's the minimum for anything in town. So, there was a lot of complex things that had to be done back then. Right now, there's about 65 units built, 65% of the, of the site is built. And the concern is that you're going to have people wanting to set a precedent or take this as a precedent and be able to do, you know, build on to their homes that are already built, or people coming in wanting to get more, you know, benefits. Or, we have this accessory unit situation, people who are already in there are going to be asking for things and say, well, you did it for one guy, why can't you do it for us? But it's even more than that. This is the plan, and I blew this up from, from the smaller ones we had there. This is the plan that originally had it. It's 21 feet of distance from the property line on this end. And basically, you had a lot of, of grading to be done. There was, there was grading of about five to six feet coming off the garage down to the property line. Right now, you only have seven feet to do that grading, okay? Now, what, what actually happened was, for some reason, they went to seven feet. I don't know what the story is behind that, because normally, when you build a, when a builder builds a house, he has a foundation survey to make sure it's in the right place. And so, not doing that is kind of very strange. So, and I haven't heard any explanation on that. But because of that, we have a situation where now the owners of the entire subdivision, as you would call it, or development, are asked to give this seven-foot situation versus the 10-foot, which will set a precedent. Now, one of the major things that happened here is that the developer, the builder, and I'm not sure whether you're the developer or builder, but came onto this land, this whole piece of property right here was used to build this house. It wasn't, it wasn't a driveway coming here, the driveway's over here, okay? No permission was asked from either Mr. Webby or Mr. Cole. So, what resulted, who was this? This is their property, his prop, this, this is about 20 feet, there's about 40 more feet before you get to their property. So they just came onto the property and just did whatever they wanted. They took down trees, they graded, and obviously, the owners of this property are upset about that. And the thing about it's a not developable lot, we question that. I mean, it, it has certain situations that have to be remedied, but this just makes it worse. So we have the two situations. We have, we have a precedent trying to be set to allow a lesser, a lesser setback, and then we have another precedent that, that a developer or a builder can just come on somebody else's lot to build their house. I don't know if too many homeowners, property owners, would think that was okay. It isn't okay. It isn't okay for setting up that kind of a precedent also in the neighborhood. This is a pretty good neighborhood, it's a nice development, and I think they just didn't comply with the basic integrity of building. I mean, it's just simple things. You have a, you have a design, which they got approved from the planning board, and then you have survey and engineering to set it up. If they didn't, if they didn't locate the building, and now they're saying, well, we made a mistake, we didn't do that, I don't think that's our problem. You know, that's kind of his problem. So does he have to remedy that with the abut? I wouldn't think so. I mean, that's basically what we're saying. It doesn't make any sense. I don't think there are too many people in this town could do that. Not only just, you know, make the setback a lot less, but actually come on your land to build their, their property. So that's kind of where we are right now. And yes, I talked to Mr. Webby just before I committed, make sure nothing's changed. He said, no, they do not want to grant that, that seven-foot. I mean, the fact that they, they built it is now their problem. And as, and I don't know his name, but as he said, they have been some discussions, that's between them, I'm not dealing with that end of it. I'm just telling you what the, what the history is and where we are right now.
Okay, thank you. Let me just clarify just so I understand. Do you understand, however, that there is a proposal that they will accept a swap of 2,175 square feet of land in exchange for 19,688 square feet of land?
That's not my issue. I'm not a lawyer.
So you don't, so you don't know, so I don't, we don't...
I'm not a lawyer, but I think they will probably get lawyers involved, but that's their problem. That's, that's my client's problem, and...
But, but your client didn't come here tonight to explain that, to talk about that, so I have to ask somebody. So, if you don't know, you don't know, that's fine.
I think they're willing to do, he, he mentioned at least three different issues that he could probably go with. But again, I'm not here to present those, I'm just saying why they, they refuse to give a grant, permission for them to, since it's not just a setback, but the setback is important to them, because it does set a precedent for the rest of the other 30% of homes. So, and you, you have a serious grading problem right now, they're right up to the line, so they're not going to be able to grade on it, they're going to have to do a wall, or they're going to have to pull back their garage another three or four feet. So that's, that's the way our, our client is looking at it.
The grading would have been required even if they had gone to 10 feet, which is, which is, the grading still would have been required within 10 feet, because that's, that's the minimum, that would have been permitted. So if the foundation was just 10 feet as opposed to 7 feet, they would still have to do the grading.
But it was 21 feet, it wasn't 10 feet.
Whether it's 21 originally designed or not, they're permitted to 10 feet. So, that's the difference, really. It's 10 to 7.
Well, they would have 10 feet and they could put a wall up, okay? Now, they'd have to put a wall up a lot closer to this driveway, if, if they use this as a driveway into their property. And the slot is buildable in the back, it rises up to...
Well, they're not using that as the driveway into their property, that's not on their property, correct?
What is?
That driveway.
This driveway is not on their property? No, it's not the driveway, it's, it's a building site that they didn't have permission to use?
Right.
No, the draw, I'm saying...
Please, Mr. Grandy.
The page back and show us where that temporary access road comes on the plan.
Okay, I'll show you on this one. Basically, it's everything beyond here. It's 60 feet from here to a point here. So it's basically this whole area here.
So you're telling me they created a temporary road the size of your two fingers are just going horizontally across?
That's right, yeah. I, I actually, there's a, there's a stake here, there's actually, the utilities are right here, the telephone and electric are right in front of it, and it goes right along. And if you go out 60 feet, you come to the edge of that dirt, dirt area. So they've gone 60 feet over.
So they took 20 feet of land, like, how foot long, took down trees, created a temporary access?
Oh, they took 60 feet of land, because it's, yeah, the, the 20 feet, the 20 feet wide is the width of the...
By 60 feet.
They took the whole 60 feet, yeah, yeah.
And all the trees were taken down?
All the trees are taken down.
It's regraded so they can bring trucks in, cement trucks?
Exactly.
Delivery trucks.
There's, there's no access on their property.
I understand, I just wanted to get the correction here. We appreciate your presentations, I believe. All right? So I have some more questions for the town.
Okay, sure. Do you want me to leave you something?
Are, are you finished? Yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Just to clarify...
First, I'm going to go back to Mr. Hartman.
Just to clarify, because of the overhang of the house, so you have the foundation, but then you have the structure and then a roof line, so the request is 5.9 would be the waiver to 5.9 feet.
Okay. Yes, why don't you, I don't think we need this up any further. Okay, so you can take that down, you can take that down?
Yep.
Can return back to the podium so that everybody can...
I have questions for that gentleman, when this is appropriate. The engineer.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Nygro. I'm going to start with Mr. Grandy, because I know he has questions. They'll go around.
All right, so, I forgot to take my Prevagen today, so I'm going to bring my, try to bring my memory back a little bit. When you made your original presentation, I forget what that date was also, because there's nothing in our packets that shows us the old presentation you made, et cetera, et cetera, here. And I do believe I made the same comments I made last time. I put in foundations, like you do, as a builder. Every time we set a footing, we call the engineer in to put in the marks and pin the footing. And then we have the engineer come back after the footing's done, and we pin the actual foundation walls also. So from this, to go from original plan of 21 feet to 7, to me, is just inexcusable, as far as I'm concerned, to be that far off. If it said 21 and you were 20-foot 8, because a small mistake was made, well, that's a little bit understandable. But you're even further in to what you're allowed for setbacks. So that is why we had the discussion of you working with the neighbors and the owners of land to come to some type of agreement. So, apparently, from what I'm hearing tonight, that hasn't happened. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay. That's all we need to know, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Mann, questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Mr. Bennett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, for, his request is actually for, for Mr. DiBenedictus, was that, is that your name, sir? So, this driveway that they utilized, did they clear that, you're saying that was 60 feet wide? So I can't imagine a driveway 60 feet wide.
20 feet wide, 60 feet long.
20 feet wide?
The actual dirt area is 20 feet, but it goes back to 60 feet to the actual, the actual stake.
Okay, all right.
So it's 60 feet on land.
So was this driveway in existence before this gentleman began construction of his house?
I don't know if it was.
I'm going to, I'm going to answer that question for you. It was kind of a trick question, I apologize. But this driveway's been there since at least 2023. And I see that it crosses the back of, I'm sorry, is Mr. Nygro, is it correct? So it crosses the back of his property and accesses a gravel, storage and gravel pit area behind his lot, which I'm going to assume is used by the developer. And you can correct me if you, if you have other knowledge, but I, I know this neighborhood, I've, I've done work in this neighborhood and, and I'm familiar with it. So I, I suggest that this driveway's been in use for way more than the three years I can see on the aerial photos that I'm looking at right now. So it appears that Mr. Nygro utilized... So it appears that Mr. Nygro utilized a driveway that already existed. He didn't construct one. He is also encumbered by a driveway on the other side of his lot, which was constructed when the house on the other side of him was built. I don't know who built that house or who built that driveway, but the people who are being aggrieved here, as, as according to your claim, they're the developers of the subdivision. Is that correct?
They, they didn't build anything on that property. There's, there's nothing on that property right now, but they are the developers. Yes, Pierre Cole, it's, I believe it's called Chappelle LLC or something of that nature. I don't remember. It was quite a few years ago when we actually did the design and got it approved. But the fact is, when I went out there with Mr. Webby last week, he said they took down all the trees, so I don't know that there was any driveway there before.
Well, I put this question to Mr. Nygro. Did you take down trees to create access to the lot?
I was going to say, when I was standing up before the board, up closer, this gentleman seems very nice, but in all honesty, everything that he just explained to you guys just shows and proves the foolish unreasonableness that I've been faced with and dealing with in terms of getting relief from this contingency that you guys have put on what you already voted to approve. In all honesty, I'm just at the end of my rope. I've tried to exhaust every single avenue. I have no problem coming here. I have no problem telling the truth. I'd like to just see if there's any way I can circumvent all the lies that were just told to you, because honestly, that's what I have to deal with in terms of-
Well, the, the question that was posed was, did you take down trees?
Only the trees on my lot. If I can actually give a little history in regards to that service road that was used for that sand and gravel pit, it was there prior to me purchasing the lot. And in addition to that, Steve Webby has a son, his name is also Steve Webby, and both parties actually did give me permission to use that. Otherwise, I would have never used it. I'm not, I'm a newcomer to the neighborhood. I'm not here to make enemies. I would have gladly, you know, used something else if they had told me to do something else, but their original words out of their mouth literally was, this lot is unbuildable, the road already exists. Actually, if I remember it, I think they explained to me that that trail was there for horses, if I'm not mistaken, where they have an easement at least for the horses. So I mean, there's no way or reason why I would want to take that down or disturb it in any way. And of course, I would use it for concrete trucks or whatever they allowed me to use it for because it is certainly convenient, and it was a factor that I considered when I purchased the lot. Staging a project and, you know, logistics is frankly everything in terms of pulling off a successful build.
So, so you did cut down trees on your property, not on Mr.-
Of course, I had to clear some of the land in order to, you know, produce the foundation.
So Chair, Chairman, if I could, so member Bennett was pointing out, so here's that road that we're talking about. This is the approximate location where, I don't know if you can see that yet, where the house is. This is the abutting property, and, and then you can see the gravel pit to the back, or the, or the site prep work area to the back. So that's the road, and this is 2025. We can actually go back, 24, 24, 23, 22, so just so you can see what's there.
So I'm looking at the, the ownership of your lot. So you didn't buy the lot from the developer, which legal name is Cheval LLC, I believe? You bought it from a, somebody else who had purchased it, I guess, from them because they're the developer? Is that correct?
I'm assuming so. In all honesty, within all the registry's deeds records, believe me, I've done my homework on this property, there is a lot of different names, a lot of different titles, a lot of different ownerships. Originally, this was called the Trails, now it's called Fox Hill Farm. There's been a lot, quite a few different changes of hands, and not just my lot, all of them frankly.
Okay, I, if you do me the favor, just answer the question.
Of course. Sorry about that.
I want to get us through this, and I want to get the facts here.
Sure.
So, so it appears to me that if I look at the registry deeds records, that property was bought by Pond Nominee Trust in 2020. So at that point, Cheval did not own it. Now, whether Cheval used that road since 2020 and thereby also trespassed, as they're claiming you have, it remains in my mind that the, the, the argument that you have, I mean, put it this way, are you, do you intend to build a driveway on your own property?
Of course.
So you've utilized this as obstruction access until you do so?
Of course.
Okay, so that sort of puts the issue to bed for me. Okay, you used it for access, the developers have used it for access, I, I don't see a problem. I mean, if it were, end up in court, it might be a different situation, but in all practicality because of the grading and the slopes in the area, I think that was the most practical use of it. And as I understand, you said someone who purported to be the owner, or maybe the owner, gave you permission verbally.
Of course.
It's unfortunate for you, you don't have that in writing, but, so here we are. So to my mind, the proposal for 2,000 square feet in exchange for 20,000 square feet seems extortionate to me. And I think that, as Mr. Grandy stated, you, you kind of, you kind of blew it by not hiring an engineer to come out and stake your, stake your foundation. So, but to kind of really take advantage of your, I don't mean to be insulting, but foolishness, that was not a smart move on your part, obviously, you know that.
Understood.
But to then take advantage of you by extorting 10 times or nine times the amount of area from you, from your lot, doesn't seem right to me. So I think those are my comments, and I'll leave the, leave it up to the rest of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. So, Mr. Bennett, I know you were on the assessor's website. Can you tell me, the neighbor who's impinging upon Mr. Nygro's lot, who did they purchase that property from?
So is he a lawyer, is Michael? Cards will be good, they face a little, he has not given previous warrants on the assessor's purchase of 2008.
Okay. Mr. Hartman, if you could-
Let me see what I have.
Chairman, is your mic on? There you go.
Yes.
Of course, none of this is in order, so let's see.
That is six citation.
Yep, no, I haven't.
Okay.
I'm just trying to find where in all the many fields it has the previous owner. So the previous owner is Fanwall LLC, F-A-N-W-A-L-L, LLC.
So I guess, to answer your question, it's been through a few owners since it was, depending on when it was constructed?
It does say banks, it says bank sale.
Okay.
And the bank sale was from First Boston Associates LLC.
Okay. All right. I have no further questions at this point in time. Any other board members have questions? No? Okay, so let's bring it back to the board and discuss this. So where we're at is we have an instance in which builder has come to us, said that they've made a mistake, built something that too close to where they shouldn't have. We've chastised the builder significantly for doing so, came to a means by which we were willing to give some relief to that. Now that means has been denied by the neighbor. The neighbor has every right to say no, but at the same time, the neighbor has come with, first of all, an assertion that property was improperly used, and that doesn't appear to be the case upfront. They've also come back with a proposal, which I believe Mr. Bennett correctly used the word extortionate. I also am always one to be very clear that a decision of this board on a special permit, on some sort of relief, is not a precedent to anybody. Just because we grant something in one particular instance does not mean that every neighbor gets to come in and then ask for it and get it. So that's not the case. And we've been very clear about that on this board, that each decision is addressed in their individuality, based upon the individual circumstances, and this board pays a lot of attention to those circumstances. So the question for this board now is, do we wish to change that condition that we placed? And if so, what do we want to change it to? Because I think it's relatively clear that as long as we leave that condition in place, the neighbor is not going to do it, and that is the neighbor's right. The neighbor didn't need to come in and give a, give us a, some sort of song and dance. All they had to say was, we're not in favor of this, period. That's their right. So I open that up to discussion to the board. Does any board member have a proposal they wish to make? Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Chairman, could we have the, I don't know if Debbie has the minutes or from the, the hearing at which we, what is the condition, actually, is what I'm looking for, is what's, what is the text of the condition? Do you know it?
All right.
I don't, do we, do we need to read aloud for the-
I believe it was Mr. Grandy's motion with the provision.
Okay, so the Zoom stuff kind of gets in my way, but Vice Chair Grandy made a motion, and I should point out, just these are draft minutes, but just, so Vice Chair Tim Grandy made a motion to approve the setback waiver contingent upon the applicant submitting a certified stamped letter from the abutting property owner, Mr. Webby, confirming that he has received the plans and has no objections to the proposed setback. The motion was seconded by Mr. Bennett, passed 4 to 1 with Mr. Donaldson in opposition. It was noted that if the required letter is not provided, the waiver will be deemed null and void regardless of the approval vote.
So procedurally, do we need to, so, so I'm prepared to make a motion that we grant the waiver without conditions.
And I, and I think that's all you need to do. Each vote kind of stands on its own, so yes. And just to point out for the record, this is an RDD. This is, the RDD backlog gives the board the ability to waive the setbacks. Normally, it's done at the time of approval, but I think you have the authority and the building commissioner agrees to do it in this kind of fashion, too. And it is, since it's not the special permit itself, I think the quantum of vote is three.
Okay, so we-
So you have four, four members here, you need three yes votes.
So, so any motion would supersede Mr. Grandy's motion?
Correct.
If you would like to, or I shall. So motion to grant the waiver without conditions.
I have a motion? Do I have a second? Hearing no second, the motion fails.
I'd just like to comment, I, I'm convinced by Mr. Bennett's arguments, but I'm also concerned that we may be creating additional problems down the road here. I guess in some ways it's not our concern if certain actions are taken by the parties involved that create further obstruction and disagreement, but I'm hoping there's some resolution of that. And I'd like the advice of the board as to that, that issue.
One possibility would be that if this board makes a general indication that absent an agreement between the parties, we are willing to reconsider our position. Perhaps that might convince the parties to be a little bit more flexible and extend out that rather than make a definitive determination today. I think, again, our condition has created, and our condition was a legitimate one, based upon circumstances that unfortunately were created, were created by the applicant, but nonetheless, based upon his assertions, we took a certain action, and now it seems those assertions were mistaken or being taken advantage of. We don't know which, we only have one side here, but based upon that, if we're, if our condition is the thing that's impeding a resolution, perhaps we can indicate that there is a sentiment to potentially remove that condition if the parties can't come to a reasonable accommodation. Maybe we ask to put this back on 30 days? Would that be sufficient? I know you want to get going, but-
To be absolutely honest with you, gentlemen, I did actually have my attorney draft the letter. I did everything that this board asked me to do. Also, I did everything that Mr. Webby asked me to do. He strung me along for two and a half weeks. I basically wasted my time and my money, only to have this just thrown back in my face, more or less.
Well, we, we understand that, and we understand that that was probably the result of the condition that we imposed.
Of course.
So if we indicate that if the parties can't come to a reasonable accommodation, perhaps we're willing to remove that condition, perhaps that might indicate to Mr. Webby that an accommodation needs to be reached, or he may end up with a building closer than he wants without any benefit.
Sure.
Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just, I want to explain kind of my thought process in this, is that what we're looking at here is very similar to a variance request, all right? However, this is an RDD development, so it's not actually necessary we can grant this waiver. But if you look at it from the, and I've seen variance requests a lot, and there, there are several factors that are required, they're, they're allowed only by state law for matters of lot shape, soil type, or topography. Clearly, the topography is definitely a, a factor here. The other issue with a variance would be that is not additionally more, Lee, help me with the language, more derogatory, not, not to the neighborhood-
Yeah, I think the difference is, and ironically, you have another case very similar that is coming up as an advisory for a special permit, your next case on the agenda. So in Plymouth, it's a special permit to vary the side setbacks, not the variance. So you, again, it's a little less of a, a bar in Plymouth for that side setback. It's not variance, special.
All right, but, but under the state law, it's, it cannot be more derogatory to the neighborhood, and that's my feeling that this-
Right, no impacts hazard, no hazards pedestrians or vehicles, not, not detrimental to the neighborhood, which would be a abutting property.
So, and I'll be honest, I see no detriment to the abut. You know, Mr. Nygro may have to build a retaining wall, as, as the, as the engineer mentioned. However, retaining walls, as long as they're under, under a certain reasonable height, don't require setbacks. So I don't see a detriment to the abut. I don't see a detriment to the neighborhood. I feel that Mr. Nygro has been put through enough, and I think he's, at this point, paid for his, his error, and I, I honestly, I feel that this should be granted and put to bed.
So Chairman, absent of a second motion, September 24th would be almost 30 days. Well, that would be the next time we actually would have, September 10th or September 24th? You, you could pick it. I guess it's September 10th.
Oh, I'll put this to Mr. Nygro, it's, it's his-
Again, I, you know, I'm weighing in my head right now, gentlemen, I, the last time that I stood before you, we talked in detail for a very long time about all my different options, all the things that I did, all the things that went wrong, so on and so forth. I'm weighing in my head right now. In all honesty, I just want to get my foundation inspected so that I can continue with the project. Another 30 days is going to put me, you know, deep into the winter, frankly, in terms of producing the job.
Then unfortunately, your option then is to modify your foundation.
I know.
Uh, I agree with you that I think they're, from what I'm hearing, I believe that their refusal seems to be motivated by greed and, and a bit unreasonable.
So Chairman, we'll...
It is, it is their right.
We'll set September, we'll put this on as a possible item on September 10th, but obviously our next meeting is August 27th. If there's ever an agreement, it could come back then, too. So if, if on the 27th or before that, or the 10th, there's an agreement, we can put it on, we'll put it as a placeholder, and, um, if something works, we can look at it.
Well, I don't think that it, something's going to work unless we have a general sense from this board that if something doesn't work out, we're willing to overturn that. And right now, I don't have that sense. I, I have, I have the sense from two board members, and I'll defer to Mr. Grandy.
Okay, so this is what I'd like to see. I'd like to see a little bit more effort between neighbors here that come to some type of agreement, okay? You made a huge mistake by going 14 feet closer to the property line, okay? And, I can't say I understand that, because you should know where you're putting your foundation on a site plan. Again, you're not within the regulations that it needs to be. That's why I put the contingency in the last vote, so that you went and approached your neighbors and tried to work together, which we're trying to be amiable. I understand you have an investment in property, you have an investment in money, you want to get going, you want to, you don't want to lose money, you don't want to go broke, et cetera, et cetera. So I would suggest, and we said August 27th, if you can get together quicker with the neighbors here, and if they don't come to that next meeting, I would ask them if we could send them an email that it's going to be discussed on that evening and make them aware that that's going to happen.
Frankly, I'm surprised he's not here. If he opposes, you'd think he'd be here to oppose it.
Yeah, let me speak, please, I have the floor right now. Thank you.
Of course.
All right? So that's what I'd like to see. And if you come back 20, 30 days from now, and the abutters refuse to, to talk with you at all, and nothing's happening, and we don't get any information, I'd be inclined, maybe, to vote the way Mr. Bennett had suggested earlier. But until that all happens, I think you need to make a little, we need to make a little bit more effort.
Sure. If, can I, uh, ask a question?
You can ask a question, and then he would like to speak very briefly.
Absolutely. Uh, if there's any way, gentlemen, reasonably that we could work together, uh, simultaneously, in other words, 30 days, it is what it is. Uh, to me, I, as I explained in my other hearing, you know, time and schedule and my trades is everything, and the time of year, frankly. Uh, I just want to reiterate that it's just the tip of the corner of the garage that is encroaching within that 10-foot setback. Is there any way I could get a, I don't know, a partial approval or something along those lines? Because I could work on the main house or 90% of the project simultaneously while we wait out and hash this out come the 10th...
So your original vote still stands, too? And I have a funny feeling, if we keep this up, it'll be to here to midnight. Your original vote stands, so if he comes in with a support letter, then we're good, because your vote says he can proceed. Without coming back to this board. If, at some point between now and whenever there's an agreement, they can come back. If not, then we have your direction, which is September 10th, we'll put it on a docket item, and if they get nowhere, they can come back and explain to you, well, what happened and why.
I think that's the only thing that we can do at this point. I think, I, no, we can't give you a partial relief, that's the bill, that's the building inspector's department in terms of that, that's their requirement. We don't have, we don't even have the authority to do something along those lines.
Okay.
But I think the, the short answer is, if I, is that you're being implored to go back and speak to the neighbor, let the neighbor know, and his engineer's here, he can convey that as well, that, that the board's position is that if the parties don't seem to be reasonable, we are inclined to reconsider our position. So it's far better for everybody to work it out rather than leave it up to us. Because if you leave it up to us, one side or perhaps both will not be happy with what we decide. So that's unfortunately where we're at.
I'm just, um...
I understand, but that's...
I don't know what to do. Last time I talked to Stevie, he literally hung up the phone on me, so I don't know what, I don't know how to make a, then I had my attorney reach out, and it was not very good from there, so I don't know what to...
You can have your attorney reach out and indicate that the statement of this board was that if the parties don't seem to be working in good faith, we are inclined to reconsider our original position and grant you the waiver without condit, conditions.
Okay.
So he's taking the risk, if he wants to be unreasonable, of us simply turning around and saying, well, fine, we're going to now make his unreasonableness more extreme than your original error. Those are, those are the risks that both parties face. Uh, it's a Solomon-esque kind of decision, I guess, where, we're proposing to split the baby and somebody's not going to be happy, but, uh, it's really all that's left us, given the disparate views of this board. So that's our decision, um, and we hope to hear favorably from you soon, and wish you the best of luck.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, understood. Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening, we have ZBA 4175, 81 Elbow Pond Lane, Paul and Brenda Turpani. Special permit required per Section 203-1C and per Section 205-2RR. Gentlemen, could you please take that outside? Dimensional table to waive the required side setback and principal building separation to construct a detached garage. We are advisory to the ZBA.
I'm Brenda Turpani. Um, my husband and I are, we're residents of Rentham. We moved here about a year and a half ago. We downsized significantly.
Excuse me, can you move the microphone closer to you, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry. We're new to the area. Um, I was just pointing out that we downsized, um, when we moved to Elbow Pond Lane, which is the old Camp Massasoit, which we love. Um, we were faced with downsizing, everything in our three-car garage to tiny two-car garage and, um, a tiny, um, unfinished basement. We have a lot of stuff, I just want to point this out. So, um, to kind of, uh, cover all that stuff and be able to have some storage, we can't even park our cars in the garage currently, um, we are looking to build a shed slash garage that is 14 feet wide by 24 feet deep. We want to put it on the side of our property, um, that abuts HOA land, which is open space that the HOA, um, has, owns and has access to. We don't have an option to put it on the other side of the house, because we have utilities over there, we have a gas line and electric line. Um, so we are requesting, I guess, I don't even know how to term this, special permit and a waiver of the 10-feet, um, setback, and I'm glad we got to see the, um, previous person go through what they did, because we're really trying to do the, the right thing here. We have talked to the HOA, um, they don't have a problem with us, uh, putting our shed garage, um, within five feet of that property line. And just to be clear, that is like a drainage area, um, just to the side of us. Um, couple of things to note, um, we're going to put it on a concrete pad, and the idea for drainage is to put 18 inches of rock all the way around the garage, so that water that comes off the roof drains into that and goes back into our own land, right? Um, we also, you know, we understand that there is some concerns about drainage, so we thought we would put silt socks along the side of the property, um, so that that drainage that's coming off the roofs, again, stays on our property, that's the whole idea there. Um, and that is pretty much it. Any questions or concerns that I can perhaps answer? We didn't come with our engineer, because we just, um, he just did up the plan, and I figured I would talk to you personally.
That's okay, and I think your, your plan is pretty well drafted out. First, let's hear from staff.
Sure, I think fairly consistently, as we look at these, a waiver to go, especially for a secondary structure from 10 feet to five feet with no objection from the abutter, or in a case like this, no objection from the abutter and abutting open space, uh, makes sense. And if you look at the site plan they have, I think if they had to find another location for this, it's going to be very close to the, uh, abutter on the other side. So again, open space abuts, no objection, probably the best place for the, the shed, shed garage to be located.
Great. Let me ask, is there anyone who, any third person who wants to be heard? Anyone in the room? Anyone on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you want to be heard, raise your hand. I'm not seeing that.
Okay, let me bring it back to the board for questions. Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm not sure if you, you know, but was this a VOSD, a Village Open Space Development? And the question is asked because I'm, I've heard the space that you're close to, closer to, referred to in many different ways, as drainage, as HOA, as open space. But open space, if it's part of a Village Open Space Development, is the primary reason for the allotment of the homes, the arrangement of the homes? It's to preserve additional land. So I have some concerns with just, I guess is a bad term to say, the precedent of encroaching upon that. So are you aware of that space? It's, it's, or maybe Mr. Hartman could explain to me, is this designated open space?
It's open space, it's owned by the association, so there are other pieces of this, the development that are open space that have been given, granted to the town, those are not in this area. But yet, it's not uncommon to have drainage, uh, going into these open space areas, too. This is primarily open space, not for recreational purposes, but for, uh, habitat and drainage. But the drainage area does show there, so...
So Mr. Hartman gave the fuller answer.
Yeah, I was going to say open space, but yeah, excuse me, I used my own.
Also, I noted on the plan, um, these are all minor, it's kind of, I'm always concerned with open space, and, you know, it's a beautiful space you're living in and protecting that as much as possible. And I noted, I believe, the plans show that the pavement for your, uh, existing, um, garage is encroaching onto that open space, and I'm, you know, concerned that additional encroachment could take place. You know, it, it seemed to me that whether the HOA or the owners said, that's fine with us, is immaterial to me, it's, it's whether this happens on a regular basis, and I know that people that live along ponds in this town like to move closer and closer to the pond as years go by. So I believe that space, would you confirm that? Is that the fact that this pavement is into that open space area?
Um, we did not build, we did not work with the builder to build the home and the driveway, so, I mean, although I see that here, um, certainly wasn't our intention to have that. Perhaps there is a corner that's on there, and we would not, um, bring our garage, you know, over that line. I mean, and...
It's existing.
Existing, we moved in and, and everything was already, you know, Mike Mulligan, I guess, was the builder, he did all this before.
It's a, it's a minor piece, you know, I, I just noted again with the, you know, they say it's all right, but would in other instances it be all right as well? I would not like to see that. I, I don't know if this is kosher of me to say, but if approved, would you commit to no further encroachment onto the open space, either with structures, pavement, or accessory buildings?
Yeah, no, we, we would not encroach on it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grandy?
Through to Chair, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Bennett?
Just a question to satisfy my curiosity, I, I, I'm wondering why you wouldn't just attach or attach this structure to the existing garage, or expand the existing garage to give you that additional square footage and thereby not, not need the waiver?
And we want to have a walkway in between, so we can get to our backyard without using the open space.
Okay, um, I think you could probably go around the new structure, but I understand what you're saying. Um, no further questions.
Thank you. So I'll just note that this doesn't actually encroach on the open space. All that this is doing is, is encroaching on the setback.
So what they're referring to is the existing driveway?
Right, the existing driveway does potentially, exactly, do that, but the building itself does not. The building itself remains solely on their property. Uh, and obviously, we give significant weight where the adjacent property owner, especially when it's an open space issue, has no objection. So that certainly gives us at least some level of comfort that the people who are using this space are satisfied that it is not going to be particularly detrimental to them, and that is ultimately the standard that we should be following, which is unreasonably detrimental to the community, which is our job to protect. So I have no other questions for you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further from the board? Seeing nothing, uh, I will entertain a motion for a recommendation.
Recommend approval to the ZBA.
I have a motion to recommend.
Second?
And a second, further discussion?
Is it, Mr. Hartman, is it, is it okay to ask for that, um, condition?
Well, I think it's a statement of law, you're not allowed to do that anyway, and that would be legal, but it's up to the board if you want to include, um, something that says no further encroachments into the open space, that's up to you.
I'll defer to the...
Up to the board.
I'll defer to the chair.
Um, if it gives Mr. Mann some level of comfort, uh, I will ask, Mr. Grandy, will you amend your motion to include that?
Yes, it just, it's, that's fine.
Thank you.
I'm sure in the HOA, the, the language is probably in it, the decisions, but it doesn't hurt to mention it again.
Right. Mr. Bennett, will you renew your second?
Renew my second, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? It is unanimous? Good luck at the ZBA.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening, we have ZBA 4176, 510 Colony Place, DBA BMW Motorrad. Phase review required per special permit case 3182, conditions one and two, to construct a motorcycle sales and service center in a planned shopping center, provides 7125. Good evening.
Good evening, Attorney Jeff Ford here on behalf of the applicant, together with Ben King, who is from Atlantic Design, the engineer on the project. We also have Joseph Laham with us, who's the manager of the LLC and the owner and operator of the dealerships. Um, so the applicant, 500 Colony Place, uh, DBA BMW Motorrad, is proceeding with a third previously approved licensed franchise auto dealership on the property. It's going to be at 510 Colony Place. Um, we previously filed, which I think you have, we ended up filing with the ZBA, so I think all those attachments go to you as well, but, uh, we had filed the 2003 decision, which was for the Plaza, which was a phased program going, I'm sure you've seen it on other occasions. Um, and we have also filed a second special permit that was issued for this site, which was 3724 in 2013, and that one authorized the three dealerships on the site. Um, so to date...
Renew my second, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Good luck at the ZBA. Next on our agenda this evening, we have ZBA 4176, 510 Colony Place, DBA BMW Motorrad. Phase review required per special permit case 3182, conditions one and two, to construct a motorcycle sales and service center in a planned shopping center, revised 7125. Good evening.
Good evening. Attorney Jeff Ford here on behalf of the applicant, together with Ben King, who is from Atlantic Design, the engineer on the project. We also have Joseph Laham with us, who's the manager of the LLC and the owner and operator of the dealerships. So the applicant, 500 Colony Place, DBA BMW Motorrad, is proceeding with a third previously approved licensed franchise auto dealership on the property. It's going to be at 510 Colony Place. We previously filed, which I think you have, we ended up filing with the ZBA, so I think all those attachments go to you as well. But we had filed the 2003 decision, which was for the Plaza, which was a phased program going, I'm sure you've seen it on other occasions. And we have also filed a second special permit that was issued for this site, which was 3724 in 2013. And that one authorized the three dealerships on the site. So to date, two of the dealerships have been built. There's a Jeep dealership and there's a Volvo dealership on the site. This is the location that's found right in the middle of those two. In 2016, the applicant went to the ZBA and got approval to use this as a parking area. While they looked for a dealership to go in this location, that was approved. And now we've come to the point where we have found the dealership. It's going to be the BMW Motorcycle Dealer. So we've returned as required under the permit. We've filed with the ZBA for an informal review, and we have been sent over to you as well. So happy to try and answer any questions collectively or whatever we can do for you. The only other thing I was going to add is we also went, which I think you saw a letter, to the West Plymouth Steering Committee and appeared before them as well. They asked us to come in, so we've done that. So they approved it unanimously.
The letter is in our packet.
Okay, thank you. I just.
To staff.
So this site is already a paved parking area. It was paved and used for the abutting car dealership, so it's already impervious. I think this is an improvement to what you see now, which is just a parking area. Landscaping is there already in the park areas. So again, I think it's just site plan review and as long as you're comfortable with the building, because the rest of the layout is essentially the same. Again, I think staff has, would recommend that you report favorably to the ZBA. And I would kind of hesitantly mention that this has been a site of discussion for another high-density 40B. I would argue that this is a far lesser use on this property than some of the other alternatives that have been suggested.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? Anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak on this matter?
If on Zoom you'd like to be heard, raise your hand. I think we're good.
Okay, I will bring it back to the board. Mr. Grandy.
BMW motorcycles, you said?
Yes.
So they, they also service, right? So all the codes should be followed as far as service inside. Dry tank, obviously, with a trench drain in front of the overhead doors, if you have oil, gas, et cetera, all those protections in place. Other than that, wish you a lot of luck. Really do. I don't know if I'll be able to get a BMW yet or not, but maybe in a few more years when I retire.
Soon enough, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Mann.
Good evening. The other dealerships on either side of you have a surplus of parking spaces, but I haven't seen this plan specifically. It seems to have reduced amount, obviously motorcycles versus automobiles and the lack of a need to display them. So that, I'm, I'm very much in favor of that. Could you comment on, and give me any detail on the, on the landscaping? I see a large swath to the north, which I think is important considering it's abutting the Wildlands Trust and behind that, a pristine preserved land. So I know the West Plymouth Steering Committee, does this reflect the West Plymouth Steering Committee who had made a request for, in the discussions, for as much green and, you know, landscaping as possible? Was that modified?
So I was just speaking with Joe, so that area in green that we're, we're referring to.
He might be better to talk on it.
Hi, I'm Joe Laham. I'm the manager and property owner, and we operate the stores. So the back piece that's green, that's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, so there's a retaining wall in the back there that's been there since it was a Sam's Club when we bought it. And so that's there. And so when all that green space you see exists, it's not something we're adding to it, it's currently there. It abuts that Nix Field in the back there.
Right.
And what was your other question?
I wanted to know some specifics of the landscaping or what you plan there.
So when we developed that site, we developed it in conjunction when we did the Volvo store. We operate and own the Volvo store as well. And when we did this, we did it just because we had one site that we sold to the best people and that we operated one. And in the middle was this ugly looking thing, so we figured, let's just do it all at the same time. This is back when we built Volvo. So the lighting's there, the asphalt's there, the green space is there. The only improvement that we're making for green space is we're adding additional green space pursuant to your requests. As far as the parking of the cars, those spaces exist already.
Right.
We're adding, I don't know if you can see it or not, but. Those three spaces there, we are adding to it so that we can just park bikes there. We will park vehicles there as well. It's a BMW quote unquote motorrad, which is motorcycles, and we can do vehicles there as well. So we've got all the drainage issues. I mean, we, we have eight stores. We know exactly what we need to do. And if you look at our current store here in Plymouth, it's exceptional. I take a lot of pride in our facilities, I take a lot of pride in our process, and we'll be doing the same thing here. This is not just throw it up and make it look good. We've, I think, sent renderings, right?
Yep, yep, everything was.
Yeah, we've sent, we've sent the red rings up. I don't know if you want to put those up if you have them.
Do you have them up on this?
Is it, are there any?
Yeah, the landscape really. Yeah, because we did address the species, and so maybe then would be good to get specific on the landscaping.
Hello, Benjamin King with Atlantic Design Engineers, also representing the applicant here. You were specifically asking about the landscaping.
Yeah, and the species, the species.
And, and we had received an approved native species list that we had sent over to the landscape designer. So he actually revised the landscaping plan to include all native species on the site. Again, there is some existing landscaping site on the site currently. But here is the landscape plan, and it involves the native planting species there, per the, per the landscape designer.
So that, that crescent shape of, for want of a better term, at the top is the, the wall you were talking, the retaining wall?
That would be the property line.
That's the property. Where's the, where's the retaining wall, right by the parking spaces?
What's the question?
He was asking for where the retaining wall.
Okay. And beyond that is?
Yeah, so why don't I do my.
Green space?
Why don't I do a share screen again, so you can look at it real time? So if I could have my screen here up, there you go. So, so we'll just zoom in real closely. So this is the site itself as it sits today. You can see the landscaping that's there, there. This is the back. You can actually see pretty much where the newer planting is in the back. And if we zoom out.
I wanted to know where the green began, and now I can see that, yeah. Right. And, and that's where I would think it's more critical to have native species in that area. I'm not sure what's there and what was originally put or whatever, but, because that's abutting a very pristine area in Wildlands Trust and then another area. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Mr. Bennett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have one minor comment. I'm looking at the engineers' report. Actually, I'm looking at the response to Richard Bossi's, the acting town engineer's comments. His general comment number four, that the proposed plan should be stamped by a registered professional landsaver. And the response was that a landsaver has previously reviewed and stamped an A&R plan. However, the design plans, if you're showing setbacks from structures to property lines, must be stamped by a landsaver.
Yep, so we'll obviously have to get that. You can speak on that if you want, Ben.
Benjamin King, the, the engineer on the project here. So our response was that we've already had a set A&R plan that was endorsed by the planning board and is stamped by a PLS. I don't understand why we would need to go ahead and get it stamped by a PLS again if we're showing the same.
Maybe check the board of registration regulations, and that might explain it. But anything showing proposed improvements relative to a property line with dimensions to the property line need to be stamped by a registered landsaver.
And we do, our condition when we followed this says final plans must address the issues raised by the town engineer. So that is in there for recommendations to the ZBA.
Can I just comment on that for one second?
Certainly.
When we, when we developed the site, we had three separate lots approved. Each one of those lots had three separate buildings approved on them. So I think that's why we're confused as to why we need, again, but trust me, we're not going to cut any corners. If we need to do it, we'll do it. But that's why that question came up. We subdivided it, we got approvals for subdivision, it's an informal to come back and see you all. And so we thought it's already, the site was already set with a 25,000 square foot footprint that was already stamped. So that's why we were confused. But if you think that we have to do it and you want us to do it, we'll do it. Simple. We're, we're going to be very simple. It's very easy. If it's, that's what it takes, we'll get it done. I did, we did send renderings of what it looks like. I don't know if you have that in your file or not.
I'm not sure if I saw those. I did see some photos.
The elevation, this? Yeah, yeah, okay, cool. Just so you know.
Anything else, Mr. Bennett?
Nothing else, thank you.
My only comment relates to your notice on groundwater sampling. I'm pleased to see that you're adding additional monitoring wells above the three that are required. And I appreciate the quarterly monitoring and the notices. I note that you say that at the request of the town DPW, you'll add an additional protocol to send those out via registered mail to the DPW Water Division, the Director, the Fire Department, and the Director of Marine and Environmental Affairs. We just ask that you add the planning department in on that as well, so that they serve as the central repository for all of that information. But again, I'm appreciative of the fact that you agreed to take that additional step and would encourage that. And with that, I have no further comments. Anything else from the board? Seeing nothing, I will call for a vote. Do I have a motion? Sorry, a motion. I'll call for a motion. Motion, do I have a motion to recommend?
Motion to recommend.
A motion from Mr. Mann. Do I have a second?
A second?
Second from Mr. Bennett. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Good luck with the ZBA in finalizing this. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Next on our agenda this evening, we have ZBA 4179, Two Commerce Way, High Rock Cranberry Crescent. Special permit review required per section 203-2B2D4 to construct a retaining wall exceeding 12 feet in height. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. For the record, Rob Dambroso, Dambroso Law in Plymouth. I think Debbie's trying to pull up my PowerPoint. I'd like to kind of walk you through, use that as a visual aid while I walk you through this. I don't think it'll take too long.
You're building an amphitheater?
That one needs to be renovated.
Big plans.
There it is. Awesome, thank you. All right, so anyhow, here I am. I thought I'd introduce the project team. I've got Rob Kavanaugh here in the audience with me from Energy North, my client. He's the director of construction. I think he just mentioned he's done about 70 sites, gas stations in his career. I've got Chris York of our engineering firm, Agreement Peterson, on the Zoom. He's in attendance tonight as well virtually. And then, of course, I'm Rob. So to give you history here, again, you guys probably remember this, but just for the, for, maybe for Mr. Mann's sake, I don't know if he was on here on, in, in May. So a couple of months ago, May 29th, we were here after a couple of, I think actually it might have been your first hearing, Frank, but back on the board. But anyway, we'd gone through a couple of iterations, both at the steering committee and in front of this board, trying to make some adjustments to the site, get it to a place where it wasn't too busy. I think that was some initial concern. And we finally got you guys there, and we were fortunate enough on May 29th to receive a favorable, I believe unanimous, recommendation to the ZBA for site approval. And again, we're going to the ZBA under an existing 1999 special permit that laid out the master planned shopping center here, the Cranberry Crescent Shopping Center. So again, that 1999 special permit called for us to come back to the ZBA pursuant to planning board recommendation to satisfy two conditions. That permit basically, you know, tell us what it's going to look like, what's going to go there, architectural, layout, lighting, et cetera. So that's what we were here for in the spring. We moved forward from that. And then subsequent to that, it was determined, our engineering crew, as they worked with the DPW on getting the drainage to be suitable for this site, turned out they were going to need a little bit of a higher retaining wall that initially contemplated. And when we had the ZBA back in June, the ZBA said, yeah, you guys, you know, are going to need a separate special permit for the retaining wall, because it does in fact exceed 12 feet in some areas. And that, that of course is one of your zoning bylaw parameters. So now we're back seeking your advice, advisory, your positive recommendation to the ZBA to approve this retaining wall that exceeds 12 feet in height. That retaining wall was shown, going backwards here, was shown on the plan that you approved or that you reviewed and recommended. So again, this is it. The retaining wall's always been contemplated. It was shown on the plan. I think, like I pointed out, we didn't know when we were last before you how tall it was going to be. So again, this is the site, just to refresh your memory, right across from the market basket, undeveloped site. Here's our layout that, that we kind of finally settled on, and then here's that retaining wall. We've given you, I think, hard copies of the retaining wall design, just to point out some key features. It's 305 linear feet. As you saw, it kind of wraps around the car wash tunnel and the lanes that lead up to the car wash tunnel. That's the north perimeter of the property. There's going to be a guardrail and a chain link fence on top for safety, make sure that no one tumbles over that retaining wall, certainly. It's going to be a prefab design, and I've got some slides here later in the deck that show what that looks like on some comparable walls. And again, we just make sure everyone was comfortable with it. The ZBA in particular said, we want to make sure this thing's well engineered and, and safe and solid and suitable for the site in terms of, you know, the, the wet area behind it and so forth. So again, not only did GPI, was GPI involved in the design, but we had a geotechnical engineering firm, Atlas, that issued a supplementary letter that I think you have in your packet, kind of indicating that their analyses of the soil determine that, you know, it would properly infiltrate stormwater and be stable, given the design that's before you. So again, that's the design, and Chris can answer any technical details, he's on the Zoom. This is a rendering, and again, the landscape plan does show these arborvitus. This is what it should look like, give or take. You know, here's that drainage area. The meat of the site is back here, but again, that's what it should look like as you're eyeing it from Commerce Way here, from the end of the site. This is a similar wall. You can see it's kind of a wraparound wall. It's got the, obviously not a chain link, but that kind of fence of sorts on top for safety. And this is kind of what ours will look like, that prefab construction. And then here's one that's local. This is a, you know, I think the same manufacturer of, of the material in Stoughton, Mass. So again, it's going to be this kind of prefabricated design. Yeah, yeah, well, that one is taller than ours, right? So we, we range from four feet to 18 feet on our design, I think, as you saw on the slide. So that's what I've got for you in a nutshell. Again, I'm happy to field any questions I can. If they're too technical, then Chris or Rob can take a stab at them, but that's what I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff?
So the bylaw requires a special permit for any retaining wall over 12 feet. And I think the intent of that and the reason we do that is, one, to have the engineers look at it and make sure that engineering wise, the higher walls are engineered properly. And second, I think it's to give special attention to walls like this that might abut other properties, especially if it was in a residential neighborhood. So in this case, this abuts the road and abuts the drainage area. So then the engineering comments will all be addressed. So again, I think it's consistent with what you saw in the site plan, the special permit. Main concerns is what it does to abutters. And the abutter is a drainage area, and the town engineering concerns will be all addressed before they can proceed.
Thank you.
And just sorry, just to interject, to dovetail on Lee's comment, we did get very modest, I think, three non-boiler plate and then one boiler plate comments from DPW on July 31st. GPI turned around and gave a response to those and updated the plan the next day. So, you know, I think we've, we feel like we're in pretty good shape with the DPW.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this? There's no one else in the room, so I'll ask, is there anyone left on Zoom? Okay. So back to the board for questions or comments. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a minor, somewhat nitpicky question, but it looks to me, from the plan and profile, if you look at the profile of the wall down at the bottom there, the high section of the wall, the nearly 18 feet high, is at the right-hand end. But having seen the renderings, it appears that the high section of the wall is at the other end. So just as far as standard engineering practice, you generally run your profile along the same direction you run your plan. But I just wanted to confirm that the high section of the wall is over there where the drainage basin is. Is that correct?
I think so. Chris, do you want to verify that for us, please?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep, yep, the wall is, the wall is at its highest where the existing drainage basin is. I'll take a look at that profile. If it needs to be flip-flopped, we can certainly do so.
I don't think it's necessary. I think that we understand it just with that clarification.
Yeah, sure.
No more questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Grandy?
Through the chair, yes, during our review, we did see the retaining wall and it stood, but didn't know what the height was going to be. It's important to me when you look at your reports and the construction quality control, the compaction being done at a minimum of every foot with testing being done during that process. So if you can see where the quality assurance is, these things are reported to the building inspector and copies will be held for the particular project for that wall. My question is, what is the longevity of the material that you're going to be using? What is the lifespan of the retaining wall itself?
Chris, do you have an opinion on that?
Let me do a little quick digging off the top of my head. I mean, it's kind of, it's.
There must be a warranty on the wall you're putting up, right? The material coming from Stoughton, Massachusetts, right?
Well, that picture of that wall was a similar wall with the materials, I do not believe will come from Stoughton.
Okay. Somewhere in Massachusetts, I hope.
We'll, we'll try to make that happen, yes. In terms of the longevity of the wall, it's a lifetime. It's, you know, it's not something that's going to be replaced in 15, 20 years. It's something that's going to last 50, 75, 100-plus years.
Okay.
As long as it's maintained. It needs to be maintained, you know, we need to, you know, the applicant doesn't want to make sure there's no vines that grow in there or anything. He wants to keep it clean, wants to keep it structurally sound so it lasts as long as humanly possible.
Okay. Now, how long do you think it will take to install the retaining wall?
That question I'll leave to Rob.
Rob?
Yeah, yeah, Rob Kavanaugh of Energy North might be the guy to answer that.
Good evening, Rob. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? I was, I was trying to do a little Google on strongback walls.
Time frame?
Oh, stuck. To build. So starting, we're hoping to get approvals and submit for permit mid-September, so we'd like to start early, mid-October. We're trying to currently work on getting a retaining and drainage approvals first because I need to build those before I do anything else. And potential turnover sometime in June of '26.
June of '26. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy.
As far as the retaining wall goes, they're said they're good up to 100 years. We'll both be there, absolutely.
Very good. I have no questions. There's nothing further from the board. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to recommend approval.
The motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. That is the end of our agenda for this evening. Any emergency matters to be raised for the board?
I have no emergency. Mr. Chair, I wondered, I attended last month my first West Plymouth Steering Committee meeting. I didn't know if, I thought it'd be a good idea to report on those when I attend them, but.
I'm happy to hear a report if you have one that you'd like to make. Certainly, I think one of the things that we're trying to encourage is actually to get reports from the steering committees themselves. So if there's something in particular from the liaison that you want to bring to our attention for us to address, that's fine. Otherwise, certainly what I would encourage is to let us know and we'll call for the steering committee itself to come and make its report, but happy to hear if there's something that you want to raise.
That's fine. And next time I attend a meeting, I'll encourage them to do so. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And second. All in favor? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.